Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
I'd like to call some county council regular meeting for Tuesday, July twenty-sixth. That was all stands for the implication of the man standing in front of the head of the district. It's been a great conversation.
That is great. I'm just trying to help them fall. Thank you for allowing this council to come together again to discuss the business before us. We invite your presence and ask that you abide with us and help us to have wisdom and understanding, a clear mind to be able to take a close look at what you have presented for us. We ask your blessings upon everyone under the sound of our voice. Bless you continue to bless our men and women who are serving in different places, especially those that are in harm's way and even those that have served and may have witnessed things and still struggling with the after effects of it. We ask you to be with them. Ask you to be in the war-torn areas of this world and just protect those and to change minds and hearts that we can have peace in this land. And as we go through our agenda, when we come to the end, we ask you to help everyone to make a safe return home and be with their families. Bless everyone in the ways that you know that they are in need of. These are our blessings we thank and ask in the precious name of our Savior, your Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Tonight, in the pledge of allegiance spoken led by U.S. retired Air Force veteran David Scott, who served from August of nineteen seventy-two to August of nineteen ninety-two. Veteran David Scott now resides in Council District Number Two. Please join me in the prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the back of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You're good. Can I get the watch?
I'm sorry, I can't say, but I have some pressing matters I have to take care of.
Is there any change to the agenda?
No, sir, there are no changes.
With approval. Exactly. With approval, now set into approve our agenda for a regular meeting for Tuesday, July twenty-sixth. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? So, uh, any opposed? The gentleman. We have a motion to approve our minutes for our regular meeting for Tuesday, July twelfth. Have a little session. We moved and properly seconded that we approve our minutes for our regular meeting for Tuesday, July twelfth. All in favor? Opposed? None? Our minutes are approved. Next, I am going to agenda land use matters. Please only request them between two oh six.
Good evening, council. I'm Jeff Dorwalt, zoning administrator for some county. My apologies. Okay. So this is rezoned RZ twenty-two oh six. It's sixteen fifty-one North Kings Highway in county jurisdiction. And the applicant is Kevi Pravard. She is the authorized agent for the owner of the property. And this is a request to rezone plus or minus six acres from R fifteen to the agricultural conservation zoning district. This is a location map of the property. This is a six acre property with about a hundred and thirty feet of frontage on North Kings Highway. It's on the east side of North Kings Highway in the northern portion of the county near the intersection of North Kings Highway and Stales Road. So, as I've stated, this is a request to rezone six acres from R fifteen to the AC or agricultural conservation. The property was rezoned. It was AC at one point in time, but it was rezoned to R fifteen back in two thousand and six to allow for a single-family residential development that just never materialized. The zoning wasn't paying, but it was originally changed to R fifteen in two thousand and six. The applicant has indicated an intent to place a manufactured home on the property and conduct some farming operations of an unspecified scale. Manufactured homes are permitted in the AC zoning district, but they are not allowed in the R fifteen district. And just to clarify, manufactured homes or mobile homes, while they are permitted, they still have to follow minimum lot size requirements, one acre per lot. Mobile home parks are not permitted in the AC district. So this is just some aerial photography of the site. This is a very long skinny parcel that doesn't have a lot of width. So it's, like I mentioned, it's a hundred and thirty feet wide. It's almost two thousand, two thousand feet deep, almost a third of a mile long. There's over a hundred and twenty-four feet of change in grade from west to east or uphill from North Kings Highway with about a six point four percent slope. So these aren't ideal development conditions. Based on the amount of road frontage, the lot could be subdivided once. But if we're talking about manufactured homes in the AC district, they have to have their longest dimension facing the road. So on that amount of lot width, it's infeasible to get two mobile homes on it facing the road in compliance with standards without some kind of relief granted from a board of zoning appeals public hearing process. So this is, this just shows the surrounding zoning. The surrounding zoning, there's about eight tracts of R fifteen land that are adjacent to it, and that was part of the original subdivision development for the rezoning back in two thousand and six. Most of the land is already in the AC zoning district. The property is in the rural development planning area per the twenty forty comprehensive plan. The primary goal of this area is to support low and disloaded city residential developments, like the non-residential and agricultural uses in a relaxed regulatory climate. This request is considered to be consistent with the county's comprehensive plan. So the planning commission discussed this request at their June meeting and did vote to recommend approval of this request. Again, the request is supported by your county comprehensive plan. I'll have to answer the questions. Very good stuff.
Just a quick question. I know a lot of folks probably concerned, you will put a trailer park out there, which that cannot happen out there, correct?
That's correct. That is not.
And with being an AC, really the only thing that person can do is put one trailer out towards the front of the road, right? I mean, that's it.
If a mobile home is going on, like one mobile home can go on.
So that's it.
Without some kind of relief from.
Right. They're gonna build a house, they can keep it at R fifteen. And then out at that point. So basically, it's just gonna be one mobile home, and they're gonna have three quarters of a mile behind them, a hundred and thirty feet wide going back that they're gonna use for whatever, I guess. And all I can do with it is.
There's not a lot.
So I just wanted to.
Could subdivide?
One is subdivided one time.
So you could put two more. They could, if you had, you could, a hundred and thirty, you could sixty-five, sixty-five down the middle. They, the second person could go on back and put another one still facing lengthwise across.
It would, AC districts have to, or the lots in the AC district have to have sixty feet of lot width throughout. So it'd be hard to see how two would be positioned on there and not make another lot.
Flag sixty-five feet ever so far.
Yeah.
Then open it up. You could put another one behind it.
You'd have to flag it more than, you'd have to have a lot more than sixty foot in width to accommodate a mobile home facing the street. So it'd be hard to do the flag, because the flag wouldn't be compliant, because it would be less than sixty foot lot width.
Got a lot in the back.
Doesn't. Yeah.
But, but I'm saying the whole lot. But if you did that, then your front lot wouldn't be with sixty-five then.
Yeah.
All lots, all the time to be with.
Yeah.
All, all areas of the lot would have to be high to sixty-five.
So just basically, we're talking one trailer, and that's one mobile home.
That's it.
That's all, that's basically all that matters.
And that's our understanding of the intent.
It is all wooded?
Yes. It's wooded with C grade. C grade or A grade for at least.
Questions, Jeff? Okay, Jeff, thank you. Prior to having second reading with House Public Hearing, were anyone wishing to speak for or? Anybody wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request? Get to everybody. Okay, get to everybody. And now we cleared a public hearing session open. Anyone wishing to speak for this rezoning request? Please proceed to the microphone, state your name for the record, and please speak to the chair. So anyone wishing to speak for this rezoning request, please go to the podium. Hearing none? You have three minutes. All right, anyone wishing to speak against this rezoning request? Please proceed to the podium, state your name for the record, and you have three minutes.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for being here. My name is John Jones. I live in Historic Hills and have two pieces of property that abut the requested rezoning area. In my review, rezoning to AC is contrary to the ordinance sectioning and purposes stated. The intent of this district is to protect and preserve areas of the county which are presently rural or agricultural in character and use and uniquely suited to agricultural use. Where urban development is permitted within the district, quality standards should be required. I live adjacent to this property, and I've seen it, and I've lived there for thirty years. It is not suited for agricultural, and that's a fact and not an opinion. Any of you can look at here to do so. My other concern is, once it's rezoned to AC, there's a litany of conditional uses that are available, and most of them are not in keeping with the character of a residential district. The proposed rezoning places an agricultural conservation district in the middle of a residential zone. Everything around it is zoned residential and prohibits manufactured housing, mobile homes. Agricultural farming operations, if that's what has claimed the new owner wants to do, provide an attractive nuisance. This could pose safety issues to the surrounding area of residents as well as a potential for chemical contamination of the soil and groundwater, contamination of adjoining properties for runoff. They've already talked about the grave, so you know there's going to be runoff as well as degradation of the soil from erosion along with norleys and odor issues. Nobody has said what type of farming they want to do. I'll be really blunt. I don't want to doggone pig farm sitting behind my house, and that could be done. Granting of a rezoning request would severely impact the adjoining property values and may make properties unsettled. I urge the council to reject and deny the rezoning request as it is clearly detrimental to the current residential district. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask if we put that back up there, just so we can look at it while we talk?
Anyone else wishing to speak again?
There's Tom McLaughrey. I live in Historic Hills as well.
What's your name, sir?
Tom McLaughrey. M.C., C.L.O.G., H.R.Y. I live across from Mr. Jones, and if I can bring history back again. You mentioned about two thousand and eight. There, I was here, not in this room, this is a new room, but the older building. Was here with Mr. Jones and some of the people here. And it was to put down the proposal of a multifamily building. Could be a townhome or an apartment complex. And they wanted to rezone for that. So what we're doing is we're lowering our standards for multifamily to a trailer park. Okay, a trailer, a trailer. In the middle of what is now two residential areas. The area that's in yellow there is Elodie Estates. And at the time, two thousand and eight, that used to be a trailer place. But they put up the appropriate signs to let everybody know it's going to be residential. So there were no complaints from us. And they got beautiful two thousand dollar homes or more there. And some of those people are here, just like some of the people from Historic Hills is here. And we're all against it. In fact, I have contacted around thirty people that are against it. Now, if we have to have a petition signed and everything else, we can do that. But the majority of people are working. Some are elderly, can't make it here. So, and everyone that I contacted doesn't want that. And our notification from the last change of venue was a sign at, by Historic Hills to inform us all that there was a change. The sign for this project was put out on Kings Highway, two sixty-one. Most people go to Columbia, don't go near the sign. Most people, the rest probably go to something. It's not a convenient notice. But I was informed by Mr. Jones and Keith, Mr. Keith Ham, that there were some survey signs going on out there. So I contacted the zoning department and asked why, what's going on? And that was last month, near the end of last month. And I asked the gentleman there to get back to me. I even sent him two photographs of the survey states. He never gave back to me except when we got this notice. So again, no. Don't, I don't want it, and the majority of people that are from here don't want it either. Thank you very much.
Good evening, council. My name is Tom McFose. I'm one of the residents there on King, Kingview Drive. My wife and I are my youngest star residents there. I won't add a whole lot to this. I would thank the zoning department for sending me out a nice little reminder of what was going on. However, you know, this piece of land that we're looking at here, Henley Wood, it is a great buffer zone. It's the same buffer zone that I talked about when we were looking at, I think in two thousand and seven for rezoning that other property that Tom was speaking of. This whole area out here has become fairly modest house prices. All of the stuff that they mentioned, or that Tom mentioned out there in yellow just above the land and the compass, those houses are mid-two hundreds, and they're adding more and more. So not only for our protection, because it will destroy my home values if they go in and strip it and even put a mobile home on it. It's gonna drive our house prices down. It's also gonna drive the houses down in that neighborhood out there, Elodie Estates. So it's in the council's best interest not to go in and really screw up your tax base out there by taking and putting in something that's not going to bring the taxes, that everything around it is. So by leaving this strip of property alone, you're keeping your tax base where it is now will only grow from there. But if you go in there and allow this rezoning to come in and strip that land and put a mobile home on it, the value that you would get from the tax increase on that six acre strip will be insignificant compared to the money you're going to lose and the value of all of those houses over time. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Thank you for letting us be here to talk to you today. My name is Keith Ham. I live in Historic Hills. My property abuts the property right behind me. I've lived there since nineteen eighty-six. Built a home out there, raised my family. It's a great neighborhood, okay? But this is not a good move. This is a move that will run people off and change the way that neighborhood works. You're talking about an area that has homes that are running anywhere from two thousand square feet up to four thousand square feet that are two hundred to five hundred thousand dollar homes. They take this one little strip of property that runs there, that's been there for how long? I have no idea. But it's not going to improve the neighborhood. And I don't see where, like, has been saved. We don't know what kind of farming operations are going on. We don't know that the woods aren't gonna be stripped down there. And I ask that you would consider all of this, and we would appreciate that denial of this rezoning request.
Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Deborah Pearson. I live across the street from where they're gonna put, where they're trying to rezon that lot. I moved here in two thousand and one, and Elodie Estates was a mobile home park. And there were problems. And I realized, they're saying only one mobile home is the intent, but intent changes. We all know that. And I can tell you for a fact, my house right now, because I was gonna move to Louisiana, almost three hundred thousand dollars. If you put a mobile home there, my property values are gonna go down. I don't want it there. I dealt with crime in the area, because we can't say what kind of person's gonna move into that mobile home. We can't. We had crime in two thousand and one when I moved here. I have guns. I admit it. Because when I moved here in two thousand and one, my husband was not always home because he worked for the military, and I was there alone. I don't want to go through that again. My husband died in two thousand and eight, and because of the neighborhood I'm in, I feel safe in my neighborhood. I'm not going to feel safe if somebody starts putting a trailer within a mile of my home. Actually, less than a mile, because I'm literally right across the street. So I would appreciate it very much for my safety, for our home values, and the safety of the people in my neighborhood if you would not allow this. And that's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Good afternoon, guys.
Good afternoon.
Been living on Kingview Drive in Florida since nineteen, when Benny Brenner retired Army. She's a warrant officer. Grew up at Charles Eaton there. So, what I want to say, since nineteen ninety-two, I raised eleven kids out of my own. When I came back from the military, I was looking for an area where there is comfort for my family. Got seventeen grandkids now, that's in and out of there. And looking at that zoning, it's gonna hit me right in the back of my yard. Pretty much right in the back of my yard. My home is in that circle. You see right in the, in the circle there? The land from that circle is where I live. It's one lot there now, but I can put two houses in there. So if you guys can reconsider that and look at all of what we have gone through, and I've been living there since nineteen ninety-two, I appreciate if y'all would reconsider rezoning that and let it stay the way it is. My home is three hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. And I don't, unlike all the rest of these families that live there, and it's a peaceful community, I'm gonna tell you, you don't see the police, but in and out of there. Your kids can play in the yard. They can play in the road. Sometime my kid played in that circle when they grew up. So please reconsider this as a veteran of the United States Army that was looking for a place for his family. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Adam Burnett. I as well am a member of the community of Historic Hills. I also happen to have a property that backs up to this reported six acres. I can't speak for everyone here, but I can speak from my experience in the farming operation, both large scale and small scale. Property is not suited for actual agriculture unless you plan on maybe raising pecan or oak trees. The greatest sixty, you will flood two sixty-one with too much water. I also, as we made reference, we don't know if it is a request for livestock as well. I grew up next to and farmed by livestock myself. I would not wish that odor on any community. That is best left out in the sticks, not just outside of town. I also fear for the potential damage if the agricultural operations are coming directly to my land and my uncertified work ethic, professional work ethic, and the fact that this is right up against how I helped feed my family, my growing family, even if I'm starting at forty years old after retirement. I also don't want that brand-new house I bought last year to be even further upside down for the next twenty years while I wait for it to finally be able to sell and be sold to potentially devastated lands. And with these thoughts, I request you reconsider your opinion. Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
Oh, county council. We appreciate the opportunity to share with you and appreciate the work you do on behalf of our community, UnPaul and Underwood. My husband and I reside in Historic Hills, and we've been, he's retired chaplain from the Air Force. He had another meeting tonight, so I'm here in his stead, which he would communicate much more effectively than I. But nonetheless, we appreciate and realize the need for homes. We know that's great today, and I appreciate the need. great today. And I appreciate the need. I realize many families are searching for places to live. But we do appreciate our community. And we are friends with a lot of people within the whole Historic Hills community. And many people are concerned, as you hear tonight, about their home values, just about what would be done with the land that is there. Slowly, a much of the land is being cleared away. There's been a lot of logging that's taken a lot of the woods and changed the environment in that community. And we know change comes and that's good, but we want it to continue to be for the betterment of all the families that live there and be something that we could be proud of 10 years from now, just like when these other changes were considered. So, we really would appreciate you considering and just looking at not just that one family's need, but the need of the whole community and the many that aren't here tonight that couldn't be to express concern to. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Kim Farmer. I live on the King's Mountains. And the area that you're looking at to rezon, I don't understand why I can't stay residential and then put a house on it. All the houses that there is, all houses around there, and even if they start doing agriculture there, you're going to start, stop. I have deer in my yard. I have coyotes running through my yard. I see raccoons and all the rest of it. That's what you're going to hurt. You're also going to hurt the environment if they start having farming animals and all the rest of it. And that's all I want. And also our value, our house values go down. And I don't want to see that. I mean, I've only got a small house. I've only got like 1,500 square feet, but I love that house. And I moved back here from Charleston after my husband died. And my value, my house value has risen since LB State came in. LB State is coming. And we can see it going down if they go ahead and put a mobile home on that lot. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
I'm interpreting for my wife. I didn't know that there was an option to have assisted services. My apologies. I request you, except my translation is not perfect, but good enough. I'm not certified. I'm just the husband in this.
My name is Lois Burnett. I'm deaf. And I live with my husband. And I do not want to add the rezoning and farming operations right behind our house. I want to let the trees... I want the trees and the animals that are, that we get the luxury of watching, even as they are garden at night, the peaceful and quietness that we get to experience because of where we work and where we chose to live. Safe place, not only from a neighborhood, but a environmental standpoint for our, hopefully soon to be children. We don't want the potential noise of, you know, farming operations. We pick the place because it's a quiet, low-stress environment for us all, you know? I don't want our animals, our dogs, to become injured or hurt because of a potential farming op with, you know, chasing after a loose critter that happened to break through their fence. And either our dogs get hit by a car as they're chasing them down because they're dogs. They do very brilliant things.
Thank you.
If I may, could you ask for a show of hands on who's against it because some are timid to talk?
No, that's, that's all. We got, we got to pitch. Thank you.
As I recall, nobody here wanted to speak for it, so.
Yes, that is. No? Yeah. Mr. Washington. Is there anyone else before I close the public hearing? Seeing the hearing done, the public hearing is closed. Mr. Washington?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As I have stated previously and reported by the newspaper, the property is right across the street from District One. I mean, you literally walk right across the street. And my understanding is that there was a shooting in the area last night, right down the street at the Sunoco Station. This project will not help development. And even though the project is in District Two, the councilman from Dazzell, he and I work very closely together. And we're both pro community. Not only have the citizens from District Two expressed some concern, citizens from my district, District One, have expressed some concerns as well. Because of the proximity to District Two, the effect will overflow into District One. And those of you who have followed me know, I am pro-community. I am going to be with the community. So, for that will, for that reason, I won't be able to support the proposal that's been brought before council. And I want everyone to understand the reason why. Mr. Chairman, thank you for my time.
Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I would like to say, of course, I don't live in that area. I am on the council and I will have to vote. And I am in support of all the requests that I've heard. However, you know, we want the minority to be heard as well. And I was just, you know, curious. I'm looking at that lot of land. It's just a long rectangle. And we've learned that it can only be divided in, well, into two parts. And I see the various parcels that are flooded. And I've heard some benefits of it being there. So, I want to say that it would be a really good buffer. And so, where I'm getting is, you know, this piece of property belongs to someone and they have a desire to use it. However, I don't think that this council is going to allow that to happen. And I just have a heart for everybody. And I'm just wondering if there's anyone there, out there, who is financially able to offer to purchase that from him or her, so that maybe they can relocate and do what they'd like to do somewhere else. And that's just something that I just felt like I wanted to say, you know? They have this property. They're not going to be able to use it. But I really feel like there should be maybe somebody who's able to help them to take it off their hands and point them into another direction. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else in council?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. When people come before county council and express their concerns on rezoning issues, I sometimes like to put myself in their position and ask how would I feel or react if this was happening to me. And I know that, you know, sometimes we don't want to deny a person the use of their property. However, when the use of that property is going to have an impact and devalue the property of people in that community, then I'm concerned. Because I wouldn't want anything to come around my property that will devalue my property. So, therefore, I can let you know right now that I do not support this rezoning request right now. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion now.
Second.
Mr. Chairman, the second.
We have a motion in the second to deny third reading and discussion.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman? I was pretty okay with this tonight until it happened. That's my biggest issue. I always think they should have written these per, like Mr. Gaines said, anywhere in that till on that map can be a mobile home tomorrow. I want you to understand that. I don't want to deny this person's request, but I like asking this person some questions, wherever she may be. But them not being here, I can't ask those questions to get a, to make a sound decision tonight, except for one decision. And as this council knows, I'm very, very settled against these requests because they have a right to use our property. This ain't easy, but I'm going to go with the residents tonight because if they're not here, that's the main reason. But I'll let you understand, anywhere in that till, they can put a mobile home tomorrow. And nothing we can do. I want you to understand that. Someone's trying to use their land for a reason. Now, I don't know what the reason is, but they're not here. So, seeing that, we call for a vote.
Okay, we have a motion in the second to deny third reading. All in favor of denying second reading, I'm sorry, denying second reading on RZ 2206. Please say aye. Aye. All opposed. There are none. Second reading on RZ 2206 is denied. Those who wish, those of you who wish to leave at this point now before we proceed in the...
Can I make one comment about what this, uh, maybe mentioned earlier?
Offered.
Uh, we did approach that.
You wouldn't have to me let us know. You wouldn't have to me let us know what you're talking about.
Please, sir.
Anyone else who may believe? authorizing the conveyance of property located in 645 Manning Avenue. The city is something you may have seen in your packet. I live in Darren McCormick saying that Representative David Weeks is working to discuss the south side of our park. And the city is working with him on that. He'd like to have his property to the south side of our park. Move first reading. Second. Moving property second, and we have first reading upon ordinance number 22978. All in favor? Aye. All opposed. There are none. First reading of ordinance 22978 on this 22979.
Chairman, members of council, this is a similar request, although this one comes from the Sumter County Community Development Corporation. This piece of property was donated or given to the city of Sumter by a gentleman who was a Maryland who's no longer wanted to have this responsibility for it, keep it up, maintain it, cutting it, paying taxes. So, he just contacted Chris Davis. He's been in touch with me. And I sent him a deed and signed it back. So, we could die it. And then we've got another CDC on adjoining property. So, Chris reached out to Gwen and wrote a letter asking if we could convey it to the CDC so the CDC could put some, a little modern income out of it. That's the fact.
Move first reading. Second. Moving property second, and we have first reading on ordinance number 22979. Discussion? There are none. All in favor? Aye. All opposed. First reading of ordinance 22979. Committee reports, Internal Affairs. Mr. Chairman, Internal Affairs, all members present, took all the actions seen. The first was a motion, second, to reappoint Karen Gaines and Mrs. Holly Chase to the IRS Festival Committee. Motion in the second from Internal Affairs. Discussion? There are none. All in favor? Aye. All opposed. Our Mr. Chairman, now from the committee, a motion, second, to reappoint Mr. Jason Reddick and to appoint Mr. Claude Weaver to the zoning board. We have a motion in the second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed. Mr. Chairman, we have a motion, second, to reappoint Mr. Barbara Fitz, Mr. Debbie Keaton, Mr. John Gerchips, Mrs. Debbie Durant, Mr. Pat Boes, Mr. Joseph Stutz, Mr. William Sanders, the store owners. Council, we have a motion, second, from Internal Affairs Committee. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed. And last, my least, motion, second, to appoint Dave Brock and Jervon Johnson to the library board. Motion in the second, Internal Affairs, for the library board. Discussion? There are none. All in favor? And that concludes Internal Affairs' report. Thank you, Mr. Reddick. Mr. Washington, public sector.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have four items on our agenda today. We started out with some counsel from a citizen, Mr. C. Floyd, who raised a few issues regarding the Dollar General on Highway 261, the recent Dollar General that was built recently. Couple of issues there. Apparently, the trash dumpsters are being picked up and emptied around 2:00 to 3:00 in the morning. And for those of you who've seen that happen, you know that it creates a lot of noise. And there are some elderly people who live in the area, some military folks, and it creates difficulty for them for that transaction to happen at 3:00 in the morning. So, they're asking council to intervene. The second issue is a promise made by the Dollar General corporate office to erect a fence around the Dollar General to increase the aesthetics for those residents living in the neighborhood where the Dollar General has been established. And then, thirdly, there are complaints about speeders in the area. And so, in an effort to address all three of those issues, Sheriff's Department will address the speeding issue. And we will be contacting Dollar General to resolve the other two issues. The second item on the agenda, we heard from citizens, Citizen Tasha Gardner, who has an idea about creating a safety instrument on Pike Road. We have a diagram that sort of outlines how it would look. I'm happy to pass it around when the council is finished. And I think the agreement is to incorporate that into the discussion that we're having around how we address that issue in a comprehensive fashion. The third issue... Uh, the third issue involved, uh, the sheriff, uh, bringing to the public safety committee concerns from residents about the excess of these fireworks, um, during all times of the night and day, and the effect that, um, it has on residents, particularly, uh, older residents and, uh, military retirees who may suffer from PTSD. Uh, I have appointed, uh, councilman from Pinewood to work, uh, with Sheriff Dennis to, uh, create some language to address that. We're not attempting to outlaw fireworks, but, um, there probably needs to be, um, some control and some designated times that folks can engage in that activity. So they will come back to the committee with some recommendations, and then, of course, we'll run those recommendations to council for council's approval. The last item on, on the agenda was a legal briefing that, that council has accepted as information. Mr. Chairman, thank you. That concludes the public safety report.
Thank you, Mr. White. That completes our committee reports. Do we have any report from council members on other meetings, trainings, and conferences?
Mr. Chairman? Thank you, Mr. Chairman, once again. Um, I attended the NACO conference this past week, which is the National Association for, uh, county officials. And, Mr. Chairman, it was a very interesting and educational conference. And one of the things that was pointed out in the conference is that the American Rescue Plan Act, which provided financial relief to citizens all across this country, uh, was very helpful. But what's, um, even more insightful that I can key it on is that that relief came directly to counties. And that is the first time in history that that has ever happened. Generally, relief goes to general assemblies, state assemblies, and then state assemblies define how counties can access the funding that is available. That did not happen this time. The federal government dealt directly with the counties, which has been an enormous help for us. And you're gonna see a lot of that, particularly, uh, in some of the things we'll be able to do with the upper funding, things we'll be able to do as it relates to roads, infrastructure, and so on. The other piece that occurred to me, and I think, um, we'll have to work to make sure this continues, is that there does need to be a continuing connection between the federal government and local jurisdictions. Because we get lost sometimes when it has to go through the state process. And as I was sitting there listening to the conversation that occurred to me, my last comment, which is probably even more important, is that I've also learned that there are a number of pots of money available through the U.S. Department of Transportation, through the U.S. Department of Agriculture, that can and will assist with infrastructure needs, with road needs, and a variety of other things. And I think that absolutely can be helpful to Sumter County. What I plan to do next is, is get with our very capable county administrator and his staff to connect us with those folks at NACO and the appropriate federal agencies, so we can be at the front of the line, um, and, and benefit from some of the opportunities, financial opportunities, health opportunities that are now available, um, for local governments in a direct fashion. Mr. Chairman, that completes my report. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Washington. Month of reports, Mr. Lanning.
The first report is the Sheriff's Report. Then next we have the Building Department's Board, the Planning Department, and we also have... A ribbon cutting for Tandem Health Business Center, and that's on Thursday, August the eighteenth. And then also, if anyone wants to play golf, that is going to be on Friday, April the twelfth, I'm sorry, August the twelfth. Lastly, um, you are invited, council members, to the Sumter County Government's Summer Youth Employment Mentoring Closing Ceremony. That will be held on Monday, August the eighth, at two o'clock, at six thirty P.M., at Patriot Hall. And I'll send you all some more information on this, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lanning. Mr. Administrator? Mr. Chairman, I'll report, see you. Thank you. Come down to the public...
Mr. Chairman, before, uh, though, I would like to give a report on the veterans again. I've been putting that off because of the budget, but I think it's very important for me to hit a milestone that I just want to talk about. Uh, since my last report to county council on March twenty-first, twenty-twenty-two, uh, forty more military veterans have died. The total is now three hundred and three deaths in the past five hundred and ninety-five days since I've been keeping this report, which is December the eighth, twenty-twenty. The source of my report is a Sumter item obituary. Every thirty-six hours, the military veterans of Sumter County die. Uh, I'm not gonna get into demographics at this time, but I just thought, since this has happened, that I wanted to give that. Thank you.
Coming down to public comments section of our agenda, citizens desiring to speak a length of no more than three minutes. Comments are made with chairman. If you have anything that you wish to address, council members, please proceed to the podium and state your name for the record. Public comment is not allowed. Uh, just to get back to what I was, I was wanting to say was, uh, I, I appreciate what you did, and people expressed that when I went around to get their support for denying the championship rezoning. And that was one subject we brought up, to turn that into a community great one. So, thank you very much for that.
Good evening, county council, uh, the public. Um, there are a few things that was bothering me. My name is, uh, Louis Watkins. I'm a citizen of Sumter County, lifelong resident. And there's a, uh, a few things that, uh, I wanted to comment on. And one is this rezoning issue. And I, I, um, I agree that sometimes, uh, government have to, uh, take action to protect the greater good of the public. And I agree with, with, uh, Councilman McGee, where she said that at some point, someone should try and protect the rights of that person and offer, make them an offer, buy that piece of property, or exchange it for another piece. I've seen where the county, or the city, or the state, federal government, even, have done that. And if this particular piece of property is the buffer, and it looks like it is, um, for that community and a, a, a reason why the area would be more developed, and put it in a trailer park, or a trailer, or some, uh, uh, purpose that don't benefit the community, then I think that the county, um, should be involved. And for it to get to the point where it's approved by a county agency without full input, and I, and I know that there is, uh, regulations about four hundred feet, uh, around the area. And I'm speaking from experience because I have a piece of property up on, uh, up on Broad Street by Lord Mill Road. And, uh, one of my family members' property was, uh, being addressed. And, I mean, it's about, uh, twenty-seven acres altogether. And I wasn't notified by the, by the county or the city. But there were other family members who lived out of town who was notified. But just, I just wanted to say that I think that this, this item, that the residents have a legitimate, um, concern, and I think that the government, um, under intimate domain or whatever reasons, should get involved to help alleviate that, that problem, um, that problem without, um, stepping on the, the rights of the person who owned the property because it's their land, and they should be, uh, should be able to pursue, to use it as they wish or for their purpose. And because that's what we do in this country, you know, so, um, that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Pamela Denise Robinson. And I've been having issues with third county first, and then county, and then York County Council jumped into. It all started when I was living in a house in Manning. A Republican white man wanted me, and I didn't want him, and for some reason, the county agreed to kick me out of the house illegally, put me and my daughter property out for five days, and have our, have all our property stolen by the hood in the flea market, third time of the year. They refused to do a piece of work. Okay, I come to York County after I made a reservation for a rental car at Enterprise, and the government started showing me out of these activities that's going on between the state agencies, federal agencies, and the places funded by the government. So Enterprise did not reserve my car, and then I called corporate on them, and you had an, an off-duty police officer come arrest me, when corporate told me they were gonna bring me a rental car from the farm. Then I was in jail. I went to court, seen Judge Manny, the off-duty officer was not there. He told me to contact my lawyer, he know what to do. No, he told me to contact a bond, he know what to do. Oh, he knew what to do, but he didn't do what he was supposed to do. He kept me in there. I took my twenty-two hours up, then met me at the door, and got my bonds back. And, um, and also, I was also legally arrested in your town again when I rented a car from Hertz. And I signed a contract, which they would not let me see on a computer or read to me. I signed a contract. They did not take the money off my card like they were supposed to, but I didn't know that was gonna happen. But it's a more illegal activity that's going on in places funded by the government in your county. And therefore, I needed the car more than a weekend for what I paid for. She told me the money didn't come off the car. And she blamed my bank. I called my bank. My bank said that was a lie, that they had the money on hold, they hadn't used it off. And your people over at what Hertz told me, that's a lie, it was my base phone. And I venge her to get her cash okay on the other debit cards, and she told me she could not do that. And I needed the car because I have a daughter, and I needed to support her, and I needed to go to work. I called corporate many times to complain, it had nothing to do with it, because I did not know that city council and the county council is responsible for how all the businesses run. I never knew that. So I would have never been depending on corporate from the start. I signed it up for the Supreme Court. That you're responsible for how all the policies are in the whole county. You have to agree with the city council people in order for the, for the policy to be able to be done in the city limit with all the businesses. I did not know that. Because no one tell me that, no one might have even known. And after that, I got arrested again when I made a comment to someone about how, after I got illegally, uh, convicted out of my home in Manning, how the police officer tried to get me, like, I guess, because they, they knew they done wrong. So I had like the... So I had the privilege to put people in jail who didn't do nothing wrong to me, but I could just make it up. And I told someone, and got back to your center, and for some reason, y'all jumped into it. Then you met me at the motel in Manning at six, for eight, two o'clock in the morning. No, not you, it was the county. They said, they shared the parking lot, ten cars deep, trying to embarrass me like I was doing drugs, like I had, we were doing drugs. But nobody was really, nobody was up to the business room going on. Then your county met me at the county line and picked me up, took me to jail. Was no bitch warrant, saying I missed court. And also, no, it wasn't for the bitch warrant, it's not. It was for a warrant for the rental car that I did not return back because I couldn't pay for it because the Hertz told me, there's nothing they could do about it, which was not my problem. I thought that y'all could have had system up to try to get the law reinstated with their businesses on your own for me to get a paperwork that didn't work either. But I needed the car, and I couldn't pay, it wasn't my fault. I explained it. But y'all didn't, but y'all helped, clearly counted, you retaliation against me, just because I talked bad about Kevin Johnson, which was true when I said he did. And on top of that, like I said, when y'all met me at the county line at the church on five twenty-one, then you had me in jail with no bitch warrant, lying to me, talking you had a bitch warrant, you didn't have none. You never had a bitch warrant. And I was yelling and screaming the whole time I was in. Couldn't use the phone. Didn't give me my paperwork I needed to, uh, about, like, what meds I take, um, what, um, what am I suicidal, you didn't do none of that, you didn't do none of that bitch warrant, nothing. You didn't issue me an inmate number for the phone, nothing. I sat in there with it for like, what, two days till I see the judge? Then your judge gave me paperwork telling me that my charge was what? A magistrate's charge? No, he told me my charge was, you know, a special charge for paperwork, but you had a court order for me to go to court at the magistrate's court. And I went to magistrate's court, when they signed me to go, they told me there was no case for me there. So you tricked me. That's how I missed the fake court appearance. So you decided to jump in again when I was on my way from Sumter to go to Claret County to sue the Shadow Park, this was the thing that kicked me and my daughter out of the house. The county council got a topic with you, and you agreed, which is that, which you had nothing to do with it. But you, you plotted with him. And you had your county people meet me at the same county line you arrested me at the first time. You went till I passed the church to park my car, they was behind, they was behind me. They was behind me the whole time I was driving. They went till I passed the church, so they knew I had a free place to park the car, and I wouldn't have, I wouldn't have moved. But he put his life on right after I passed the church, then I went to jail.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes?
You had now six minutes. I have talked to you. I have had sheriff talk to you.
You talked, didn't tell me you had nothing to do with the way the business is running.
I don't have anything, but I'm not gonna discuss.
I know, but you didn't tell me what to do.
I can't tell you what to do. You need to get an attorney.
I did. He told me to tell you to put all my problems in the newspaper, and you wouldn't do. He does the only way to make it stop.
Okay.
And you got mad, he said the actual lawyer said that.
I haven't even talked to the lawyer.
If you tell the lawyer, he told you to put all my problems, you didn't make it stop. Then what you getting mad at me for? You wasn't who it is, he said.
I don't even know who you are.
I didn't answer that. I told you, I said, it's the office, office, funded by the government, so I don't have that. That's the only reason I keep going to jail. What's that, what's your lawyer, that's who the lawyer said, he didn't, who the lawyer, to hit the person, the lawyer?
Move to the chair.
Hey!
Sir?
Let me go to jail one more time. You not let me go to jail.